Well, hey, everybody out there in Facebook and social media here. We are on our third interview. We had Joel Erickson, City Administrator. We had James, West City Council, and now we have Brian. I'll help him introduce himself a little bit more there, too. But, well, first of all, Brian, thank you for coming on and doing this. And you want to introduce yourself a little bit here, and then we'll get right into the questions.
Sounds good. Thank you, Tyler. I appreciate you doing this. Brian Worms Kirshen, City Council member. Joined the City Council in the special election of 2023 to replace David Webb after he moved out of state. So not the newest member, but also not the oldest member of the City Council. You know, and I really appreciate this, this venue, this format that you're doing here. I think this is really great that we're taking this opportunity to have another avenue to just have a conversation about Lonsdale, talk to the people. And, you know, what are the questions? What are, you know, kind of keep it open and candid, really? I love it. Thank you so much for this, and thank you for having me.
Oh, no, thank you for coming and doing this in the studio here. For the people listening, you know, I'm still learning some of the audio stuff when I do my portable stuff. So thank you for being patient with that, but thank you for the views that we're getting. And that's part of what this podcast is. I started it a while ago. We had our second child, and so I had to throttle back a little bit. And now it's getting back into it. Eventually, we will be live 24/7 with slide shows of upcoming events, weather, all this stuff like that.
Awesome.
You know, you, what the audience sees is us on the cameras like this. What you're not seeing is all the stuff back here. And I kind of mentioned that with James when his was portable while you're in my home studio here.
It's an impressive studio, I'll say that.
Thank you, thank you. You know, and there's still some learning with it, but eventually we will be live 24/7 with slide shows. And then hopefully doing more stuff like this. I've talked to a couple of local business owners, too. We're going to be doing that. So I decided to use City Council. Hey, let's kick it off with this. And you guys have all been supportive. Thank you for that. You kind of read, led into it what one of my questions was like, hey, you're not the new kid on the block, but you're not the old kid on the block of City Council. But here's one for you. What brought you to the city of Lonsdale? Are you from the area, moved here?
Sure. So we, my wife and I, so I'm married, my wife Tori, and then we have two boys. We moved to Lonsdale almost, it's been almost 23 years. March will be 23 years in 2026. We moved down here and it's actually, it's kind of a funny story. Born and raised in Burnsville, grew up there, lived there for a while. You know, we kind of bounced around through the cities, spent a lot of time in Burnsville before coming back, or not back, I should say, before coming down to Lonsdale. You know, we were looking for our first house. And my wife has family in the northern suburbs, so we were looking up there and, you know, just looking at different places. And I had a friend who moved to Vesley, guy I went to high school with. He had moved to Vesley a few years before we moved. And he said, you know, stop looking in the northern suburbs. Come down to Lonsdale. You're going to get so much more for your money. And we did, and he was right. He was right. Back in 2003, we got a lot. We got a lot for the same price that we would spend up in the suburbs, in the metro area. And that's what brought us here. You know, my, my, my parents and my grandparents, they, you know, from the Jordan area. So not completely unfamiliar to the area. You know, Jordan's just a little, little further northwest of us. So familiar with the area. My grandpa's got connections to people from town. You know, he was served in the army with some folks around town. So we knew of Lonsdale, and then when we moved to Lonsdale, we fell in love with Lonsdale. It's, it's been great, and we literally can't imagine going anywhere else.
No, it's definitely a great community, and I moved here four years ago for almost the same reasons you did. You know, being not the newest kid to the block, not the oldest kid to the block, coming to Lonsdale. What has been the most exciting part of the journey of being in city government for you?
The most exciting thing I would say is just the, the opportunity to get to know so many people in our community. You know, I've, I've had a lot of, of great, I've met a lot of great people that I would proudly call friends through this journey of being involved in. You know, first it was the EDA. I started with the EDA. And then ran in the special election, but being on the boards that I'm on, you know, the library board, working with the liquor store committee, working with the EDA, throughout the entire process and through those years, working in those positions with those, those boards. It gave me a great opportunity to meet some fantastic people. And what I love about it is, is these are people, like yourself. I mean, let's be honest, you're on the library board, you know? It's people that are giving of their time for nothing in return, other than the satisfaction of doing something good for our community. And that's what I really love about our boards and our commissions. And, you know, I'm really proud of being able to be a part of that with, with, with the folks that are on those boards and commissions and our city staff, working on the liquor store committee. That's, that's our city staff, and we've got outstanding city staff. Just the relationships that I've been able to build with people, I think is the most exciting part. You know, seeing Lonsdale grow, sometimes fast, sometimes slow, but just being a part of that, helping to see some growth. You know, what's best for the community, how is best way to do it, what do we want to see? Those are all great parts of it, too, but the relationships, I would say, is the most exciting part.
That's, that's cool. We, we did some laughing already here, but we're, we're going to bring it into some hot topics.
Sure.
Again, not being the oldest blood, but not being the newest blood. This is one that's, that's going to hit a little bit differently from when James, when I did the interview with him. It was a big project, and let's face it, elephant in the room is that new city hall.
Sure.
And the transitioning from the old city hall to the new city hall. I, I will say a side note, I've been in both buildings. He let the cat out of the bag. I am on the library board. And so we did interviews in both places. And the old city hall was, was a fine building. It was adequate. But the new one's way, way different and definitely room to grow, at least that's what I see from it. But what inspired the change for that? What does the new space mean for the future of our community? And what's happening with the old one?
So I guess I can't say what inspired, well, the, the timing, I would say, is the big thing, not necessarily inspiration, but the timing. The, the new, a new city hall was a part of the comprehensive plan put in place years ago. You know, there was old, older, I shouldn't say old. I don't like the term old because it makes me think that we're talking about age of some of the folks. But the, the previous councils, some previous councils, put together a comprehensive plan for the city. And within that was kind of a campus, so to speak, or, or something. You know, the police station was part of that. We got the new police station. A new city hall was part of that. A new library eventually, I believe, is part of that comprehensive plan. You know, and frankly, it was all going to be built net new, like we did with the police station. But we had an opportunity, you know, and granted, it wasn't the best opportunity. It was an unfortunate opportunity, I guess I would, would say. When Northfield Clinic closed down their Lonsdale location, the building was available. It was an opportunistic acquisition of that building, I guess is the best way to put it. It did give us the, the ability to move forward with the comprehensive plan, get this new city hall in place sooner than maybe we had, it had anticipated, and at a lower cost, because we're not building a net new building. Land acquisition, breaking ground, building a new building. I mean, for what we have, I would guess that in today's numbers, it would be at least five to six million dollars, if not more, to build net new with what we've got. Same size, same makeup, same footprint, land, all that stuff. Now, at the end of the day, would I rather have a clinic in town? Absolutely. But unfortunately, we fell victim to the same thing a lot of rural, small-town Minnesota is falling victim to is health systems reducing their footprint, reducing their, their network, whatever, especially within small rural communities. It's a real problem. And it's not a problem we're going to solve here in Lonsdale. It's a problem that the legislature is going to have to talk about. I don't know if they, if they can address it, I would hope, but it's such, it's a hard problem to tackle. You know, it's, it's one of these fine lines, right? How far is government going too far between private business, private property ownership, all that kind of stuff, and saying what's best for, for the population? You can't force a private business to be in business where they don't want to be in business. And that's unfortunately what we, we ran into. Now, the, the city hall itself, I, I think for the future, it's great. I mean, as the community grows, we absolutely need it. We will have to add new staff at some point. I don't foresee it anytime soon, because we have adequate, good staff for what we need currently. But as the city grows, staff will probably have to grow, too. We have the capacity with this new building to grow that without having to incur new costs of a new building or something like that. I think the term you used adequate for the old building was 100% on point. It, it was fine. It served its purpose. Was it flashy? No. Doesn't need to be flashy. I, I would say the new building's not flashy either. I would say it's, it's professional. It's very nice. You know, it's, it's got good facilities, but it's also a community building. It's not just city hall. You know, we have Evergreen Speech Therapy up there. They rent space and they provide a service to our community. You know, they, they have a lot of clients in this area, and that's why they wanted to come to Lonsdale. And that's why they came to us and said, do you have space for us? And it's not just speech therapy. I mean, go to their website. They, they offer tutoring services. So there is a broader offering to the community that Evergreen brings. So that's in the city hall. We have Skywarn. They have offices up there as well. So it's things for the community. The, the council chambers themselves, they're available for community use as a meeting space. Boy Scouts can meet there. If there's a church that doesn't have a building, for example, they could use that space and have, have services up there. You can have a baby shower up there. That's the beauty of it. It's, it's, it's a space that's open to the community.
So, so what's Brian is saying out there to everybody that?
Utilize our space.
It's our building as a community.
Yes.
Go there, use it. There's extra rooms, extra facilities now for where it sounds like the old city hall was a little more restricted on that. You know, we're definitely going to move on to the next question, but I've got one because you've been, again, not the newest kid on the block, not the oldest kid. It wasn't the lack of trying to find another facility
Correct.
or clinic or, or whatever, to bring more medical staff here.
Correct.
I've heard that, you know, it was, you guys tried a couple of different options. And, and the city of Northfield, which happened to own the building because they own the hospital and clinic, was like, here's what you do. You want to explain part of that process of
Yes.
you've tried reaching ABC and, and all the fun stuff like that?
Yeah. I know city staff reached out. You know, I personally wasn't involved in those conversations. But, you know, being on the council at that time, I asked the question. I asked the question of our city staff, you know, did we talk to anybody about maintaining that as a clinic? And there was outreach to all the big systems, Alina, Mayo, Fairview, I know it's Fairview, U of M, you know, whatever the systems are, all the big ones that would potentially have a use for that. They were all contacted, and we, we had conversations back and forth. When I say we, the city, had conversations back and forth, you know? Do you see this happening? And they all said, no, we, we're, our footprint and our reach to your area, Lonsdale, is Lakeville. That's where we're going. If we're putting in a clinic, it's going to be Lakeville. If we don't have one there already, if we do, it's going to be Lakeville. We're consolidating our size, and Lakeville's where you need to go. That's what we were told. You know, again, we kind of talked, I, I mentioned earlier, you can't make a business be in business somewhere where they don't want to be in business. You can ask all day long, and, you know, there are tools we have as a, as a community, as a, as a government, a local government, to try to entice businesses in. But at the end of the day, they can still say we, we're not interested. And that's unfortunately what happened with, with the clinic. I mean, we've had the same problem with a pharmacy for years. Excuse me. We've been, you know, we, we had a pharmacy at, at Mackentunes for a long time. And they, you know, the business owner made a decision to stop their business at Mackentunes. I, and I, I don't know the details on that. That was long before I was involved in the council. And, you know, it could have been a retirement. I don't know the exact details. But we've tried as a community to say, how do we get a pharmacy to come to town? Because a pharmacy is a need. You know, people talk about it. We need a pharmacy. It'd be great. Be great if we didn't have to go to, to New Prague, you know? Or to Northfield or to Lakeville or whatever. One of the tricky parts about that, this is an interesting thing that I found out about pharmacy in general, is like Walgreens, right? We have the Walgreens in New Prague. Walgreens has a policy internally that they can't have stores within X number of miles of one another.
And we're too close.
And we're too close because of the, the New Prague one. You know, they're not Starbucks where they're going to open up another one across the street from each other. So, you know, we're never going to get a Walgreens unless, for some reason, that one closes and they decide to move to Lonsdale. But I, I guess I can't see that, you know? But they're not the only pharmacy in town, right? You know, it's, you, you can say, please come, but they're going to do their, their due diligence. And they're going to say, we, we either yes, see the, the value in doing that, or we don't. And at this point, we just haven't been able to get one to say it's, it's something we're looking to do. Not, not that we're going to not keep trying, but it's just another example.
The process of what it is, and like you're saying, private business is private business. They can choose to do what they want to do or don't want to do with it. You know, 100% makes sense. The talk has been going around. The people have submitted their applications. And there is now a new committee, the Founder's Day Committee.
Yeah.
What led to the new team and, and what brought the Founder's Day Committee to come about your, your perspective on that?
Sure.
And what can residents look for that's different and exciting about this committee and this time?
You know, not being on that committee myself, you know, this is something that I believe was sparked from the last election cycle. There was a lot of talk about this in campaigns leading up to last November. And the Parks Board has kind of had on and off conversations about that for a while. You know, one of the things I think that's really driving this is next year, America's going to be 250 years old. You know, that's a big milestone birthday. So what an opportune time to have a Founder's Day, you know, to get back into it. And a lot of people, it's nostalgic, right? I, I'm sure you probably don't remember because you weren't here at the time. But the 3rd and 4th of July used to be a thing for not just Lonsdale, but Lonsdale and Vesley kind of collectively. Lonsdale would do a 3rd of July celebration. There'd be some things on, on Main Streets, you know, not, not to the scale of Community Days, but similar, you know, there'd be some, some vendor fair tents set up, that kind of thing. Inflatables for the kids in one of the parks. Then the Aces would play Vesley, and then we'd have fireworks. Then on the 4th of July, Vesley would have their parade, and they'd have their, their festival. And then Lonsdale would play the Aces, or, excuse me, Vesley, in Vesley. So it was this thing, this rivalry on the 3rd and 4th of July, and then they'd have fireworks. Both communities, you know, for whatever reason, I know here, it was, a lot of it was the, the individuals that held the licenses, you know, that's an expensive thing to do. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of training that you have to do. And it's, it's, it is, I don't want to say a burden, but it is a lot of work to ask somebody to do that. So those individuals, you know, either because they're aging out and don't want to do it anymore, or, you know, the time or the cost, you know, there's just various reasons, the insurance you have to carry on that. It got more and more difficult, and people decided, you know, I, I need to stop. I just can't do this anymore. And then, you know, Vesley, I can't speak to why they, they ended their, their parade and their, their fireworks and everything. And it's a shame because it was a lot of fun. We had a lot of fun those, those years. I mean, honestly, I was going to those celebrations before we even moved to Lonsdale. That was our introduction to Lonsdale and Vesley. It was my friends that, come on down, you got to come down for the 4th of July. It's a great time.
You, you came down here to play, and then you ended up staying?
Yes. Yeah. Come to play and learn to stay, right? But yeah, so the nostalgia piece, the the, the milestone birthday of our country, just something new, something different. You know, let's make a reason for people to come to Lonsdale on the weekends, you know, Community Days. We get people that come down here. Well, what, what if we did that more than once? I think it's kind of the mindset that people had. This is what I'm hearing from, from folks that are driving the community, committee. But what I'm excited about with it is, it's not just fireworks. It's not just your typical 4th of July, you know, wave the flag, shoot off some fireworks, have a beer, whatever, you know, which is fine. That's great. But my, my understanding from what I'm hearing from people that are talking about getting involved in the committee, the committee itself, just people around town, hey, if we did this, these would be cool things I'd like to see. You know, there's some great ideas being floated around, food trucks, you know, movies in the park, you know, all that kind of stuff, just something expanding it, making it more than just an evening of fireworks, but a whole day event or
Your, your own events.
Yeah.
The movies in the park, bringing those back, maybe bringing other stuff. I, I personally heard try to bring some other, like smaller concerts into place as well. Sounds like that's moving forward. I, I know, talking with James, the committee's formed.
Yes.
The people are being notified who's going to be on the committee, and then they're, they're meeting very, very soon. You know, as, as these questions came around, I, I posted this publicly
Yeah.
on the Lonsdale Happenings for everybody to see these questions. And, and the one I'm looking at, and the one I'm going to bring up next is in the short time, because I posted this about a month ago, give or take.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of things that happen even between now and then when I posted this.
Right.
And, and, and this question may, may potentially have been bringing up in your thought process of what's happened in the last council meeting, or maybe something different. But what has been the biggest challenge for the council this year? And as a team, how have you guys worked through it?
Yeah, so I think, you know, the biggest challenge changes from month to month and period to period within the council. I would say, you know, if you were to ask me this earlier this year, I would have said the biggest challenge for us is the fact that it's essentially almost a new council, right? You know, like I said, I, less than three years I've been on the council. By the time I have to run again, I won't even have served a full term because I ran in a special election to fill a vacancy. You know, then we have Scott, Scott Palava, who's been on the council a long time. So we do have that institutional knowledge there with him, but everybody else is brand new. So really, you know, the tenure, which is funny that I'm a veteran guy, not even having three years under my belt on the council. But the challenge at that point was just learning, learning, you know? How do we do this without, you know, I mean, let's be honest, the previous council had years and years of experience. And, you know, there's that institutional knowledge with that. You know, and depending on who you talk to for good or for bad, right, whatever. I'm not, I'm not saying one way or the other, but just learning who each of us are, what are our priorities. The biggest challenge was getting that, that focus in place of what do we want to do? What are our priorities? Where do we want to go? What's the direction we want to take things? That was, that was a little bit of a hurdle to try and get to that point because, I mean, we all had ideas, and we all still have ideas, but we didn't know which ones were the priorities collectively as a group. Because we all have our own priorities, but we have to come together and say, this is our vision. This is our priority as a council. Because if we're all working off of everybody's one priority, we're not going to get anywhere very quickly. I'd say now, we've kind of, we've kind of figured that out. We've kind of figured each other out. Well, I shouldn't say figured each other out. I don't want to make it sound like that, but we've kind of gotten to know one another. We, we know, like, I, I have a pretty good idea of what Mayor Berg wants to do. I have a pretty good idea of the focus and the, the vision of, you know, Cory Miller. You know, James, I know where his focus is. And we can kind of take that and say, okay, well, my, you know, I, I'm a, I'm a economic development guy. That's where I started with the city was with the EDA. I want to see more business come to town. How can we do that? How can we drive that? And how does my focus of, let's get more business to come to town, tie in with, say, what Cory wants to do about how do we get this Founder's Day thing off the ground? How does that tie into the parks as a bigger thing? How do we, you know, and, and there's been a lot of work, you know, as a library board member, you've seen it too, right? A lot of collaboration between the library and the Parks Board. And I, I really think we saw that this year with the summer reading program. It was a hit. It was huge. It was great. It was one of the best summer reading programs I think we've had ever. And I could be wrong, and if I am, I'm sure Margarita will let me know that I am wrong. We've had betters or, or we've had better, bigger participation, whatever. But I, I was really impressed with it this year. We, you know, we expanded it to adults. It was great, but we did a lot of stuff in the parks. You know, we had readings in the parks. And that relationship is just going to grow. I know both the Park Board and the Library Board are part, still continuing to talk about what can we do to expand that. Really, our challenge, I think, is budget. Right now, we're in the middle of budget season, coming to the tail end of budget season. And, you know, figuring out, as a new council, getting through that first budget cycle is, is always a challenge. But the other challenge I think we got to have is, you know, okay, we're, we're starting to get some ideas of growth, some rumblings of growth. There's a lot of interest in Lonsdale right now from different businesses, developers. You know, we all know that there's developers looking at Lonsdale. It's very clear that there are developers looking at Lonsdale right now. You know, for good or for bad, whatever, you know, people want to think, there are developers that are looking. And it's not just the one that I'm sure people are thinking of when I say that. There are a lot of other developers. And how do we, how do we navigate that, right? That's the thing. And that's the thing that I'm really keeping close in my mind is as we're having these conversations with developers and about development, what do we want to see? How do we want to work with them? And being prepared for, what are they going to ask us for? Because developers are very good at knowing the game and coming and say, I'll do this and this and this, but this is what I want the city to do for me. You know, it's, it's a negotiation like anything else, but we got to make sure that we don't give and not get as well.
Yep.
Because, yeah.
Or you don't over give.
Yes.
And, and, and
What's in it for the, the citizens?
Yep.
You know, a lot of people say, what's in it for the city? And, and the way I like to think of that is not what, what's in it for the city, but what's in it for the citizens of the city? What's in it for the community? Because at the end of the day, any new development, I can tell you what, what's in it for the city. Just from the word go, regardless of whether there's any incentives for the developer, the city's going to get tax revenue. You know, that's a given. But what does that do for the community? It's easy to say, well, you know, you're going to have your streets plowed. You're going to have your sewer and water working. You're going to, you know, you're going to have the grass cut at the parks. You're going to have parks. You know, those are all things we get, but we can always say there's more to it than that, right? You know, that's your basics. That's going to happen regardless of whether the development happens or not. You know, if we don't grow an inch, the grass is still going to get cut. The roads are still going to get plowed. But the question is, how much is it going to cost you and me when we get our property tax bill? Because if we don't grow, our tax bill will.
Yep. And so it kind of spreads the wealth with, with the taxes. And then bringing stuff for the community is kind of what I'm getting from that conversation as well. Not, not just the financial side for the city and the financial side for, for the local government and sharing the tax burden with, with more of an entity as well, but also what, what more could it bring to the community?
Right.
Businesses, places to live, bringing, you know, sharing the wealth with, bringing the fireworks back, stuff like that. You know, speaking of community, community input is, is very important. And James mentioned this, and it was a big push for the streaming side of things. But what are some of the ways residents can get involved and have their voices heard, rather through events, town halls, committees?
Yeah, all, all the above. Come to a city council meeting. Every single one of them is open to the public. There's always time for anybody to speak their mind about anything, whether it's on the agenda or not. There is always time at the beginning of every single meeting for any citizen to address the council. And, and it's not just the council. You know, I think people forget that all of our advisory boards have that exact same public input, period. And I would love to see more of that from, from the community. And I think we've, we've really seen an uptick in community and community engagement in the council over the last year, absolutely. People are coming to council meetings. Now, granted, we've had a lot of hot topics, you know, that, that have gotten people involved, and that's great. I think it's awesome that people are, are stepping up, they're, they're, they're voicing their concern or their approval of some of those topics. But come. The other thing that, you know, I love getting communication from people around town, whether it's a phone call, whether it's an email, hit me up. My contact information is on the website. If you go to the website, you go to the, the menu, go to government, it'll show the council. Click on any one of our names. We have an email address there, our phone number's there, call, text, email. I always respond to every, every communication I get. So, you know, I welcome anything, you know? If I'm doing a bad job, tell me. If I'm doing a good job, tell me.
Or indifferent, either way.
Or if you just want to talk about it, you know, talk about some, like I, you know, when, when we were talking about the chicken ordinance, when the chicken ordinance was coming up, I had a, a citizen reach out and say, you know, I got this concern, blah, blah, blah. And I said, you know what? I can email you back and we can have a conversation. Or, you know, I actually called them and I said, can I stop by? Can I, can I just swing by? Yeah, come on over. So I went over to their house, sat down at the kitchen table. We talked for about an hour. You know, just what are your concerns about the ordinance? You know, just what are your concerns about the ordinance? You know, what can, what can I do? Tell me, you know? I, I like that. I, I, you know, and I, I like to take that to the next level. I mean, now if everybody in town, all 5,000 or so say, hey, I want you to come to my house, that's going to be a tough uh, thing to fill, but I, I like to sit down and talk one-on-one with people, face-to-face.
We could, I could show you how to do that on Google Calendar and people could just put time spots.
Yeah. Calendee or I think is, yeah, I get, I get that all the time from vendors. They're like, yeah, just schedule time on my calendar.
The biggest thing is, is what I'm getting from you is you're, it's happy to see people coming to the council meetings. Maybe come out and come to the library, library board meeting, EDA meeting, Founder's Day Committee, when those are fully up and running, come to those. And if you can't put them online, um, sorry, watch online, uh, as this will be posted online. Let's get some good views on this one too. Um, you know, looking ahead, you've got a lot of, lot of, lot of good projects working on and, and, and big and small things moving forward, hot topics, not hot topics. What are you personally excited about for the city?
Well, I was hoping to be really excited this year of us finally hitting that 5,000 threshold. But the state demographer kind of pulled the rug out on us again for a second year in a row. Um, that's something I've been focused on since day one. It's joining the council is, 5,000 is an important number for Lawnsdale. And for those that don't know, the reason 5,000 population is an important number is because we are then as a city eligible for, um, it's called municipal aid for city streets. Or state aid, state aid for city streets, I believe is, is the program. It's, it's through um, I believe it's, it's administered through MINDOT, I believe. I'd have to go back and look at, I had some communications with the state demographer's office. The state demographer's office is the one who um, gets the official estimate of a population between censuses. So every year there's a, here's what we assume your population is. When you're over 5,000, you're then eligible for that, that street money. Uh, that's what we kind of call it as we talk about it, the, the street money from the state. It's like um, LGA, Local Government Aid, which every city in, in the state gets. Basically because, you know, it, it's kind of a um, I use the term money laundering sometimes, which is probably not the best term to call it, but you know, this happens with, with the schools too. It's like the county collects our taxes. So we have our, our city ta- portion of the property tax. We have our, our school board portion of the property tax. We have our county portion. County collects it. Some of that money ends up in St. Paul. And they, especially with the school stuff, they put it in a, a formula, a machine, I like to say, and they spin it around and it spits out some money to the other end. So we put money in and then they spit out other money on the other end that comes back to us in LGA or in um, the formula for student funding. Um, you know, the, the per pupil student money. It's, it's our money that we've already paid up to St. Paul. They spin it around and they give us.
The reallocated to other committees, not necessarily the one.
Yes.
So it sounds like it's similar to the road thing here that if.
Similar.
Before, before I go to that point, how close are we to that 5,000?
So the number that we got this year, and this number is certified in like the June, July time period. We were at 4,987. It's a number I will never forget because last year we were, so what happened is there was a year where they made a mistake. And they had us estimated way too high. So we thought we should have hit the 5,000 number about three years ago.
Oh.
But then they came back and said, oh no, sorry, we made a mistake and they recalculated. So we went like this. And then we went like this. So we've been inching back up ever since. Um, and this year was the year I thought we had. I was, I was so sure that we had that 5,000 number and then the nu- the number came from the demographer and 4,987. It's a number I'll never forget.
So close, yet so far. You know, it, it, get your, get your buddies to move in. There's places around. Um, and, and you know, we can, we can get, it's more than a technical talk, but some of the extra funds to help get some care for our roads.
Yeah. So essentially to, to kind of circle back and finish out the explanation of it is, um, it's, it's kind of like LGA, but it's not the, the county money goes up and they spin it around. So the, the, the Department of uh, Transportation is allocated a budget. Part of that budget is this, this aid for roads. And cities that qualify get a portion based on their population. And I believe we would be similar to what Elko is receiving because they are, they're eligible for it. Uh, Elko, Newmarket, and I believe they get around 250,000 a year, somewhere right around that number, 200 to $300,000 a year. That's a lot of money that we could do a lot of good with our roads. Um, you know, we need to, we need to get this, we, we've been working to, to try and get this, what we call a pavement improvement plan in place. And essentially it's, it's a, a long-term plan for, you know, we do, we say we build a brand new road. Year one, this is, the road gets built. Year three, we do some patching or whatever. Year five, it gets a whatever X thing. Year 10, it's a new mill and overlay. So you're basically, it, it, it allows us to budget better for our streets and it allows us to maintain consistent um.
Upkeeping maintenance of it versus letting them get worse.
Yeah. And, and we're going to know.
Um, you just have it.
And it cycles. Yeah. So you have, you have sections of the city like this year, you know, this is the year one and then your, your three, your five, your 10, and then it just rotates. Okay. So now this is, so after year 20 or whatever, maybe that's the time to replace. And I'm just throwing out numbers. I'm going to say we're replacing roads every 20 years, but I just keeping around numbers. So it's 20, they get replaced. Now they're year one. And then this one's year seven, you know, so it just kind of, it, it, it gives us some predictability in our maintenance.
Puts it in a working cycle and then if we get that money, it, it'll make it a lot, a lot easier to maintain that versus waiting for the road to get to more despaired is what I'm getting from you on that one.
Absolutely. Yeah. It gives us some, some predictability in our, in our maintenance. And, and I know our uh, city works director, Joe Dornfeld, he, this is something that he's been really working towards for a long time. Um, our, our city work staff, these guys are amazing. I can't say enough great things about our city work staff. Um, you know, if you get a chance or you're out there, you know, in a park and somebody's mowing or they're striping one of the fields, just stop and thank them.
Go and say hi.
Yeah. Say hello. They're great guys. Super great guys. And a lot of them live here right in town. So you know, we have, these are, these are people that live in town. A lot of our city staff are people that live here. It's not somebody who commutes here, like in some of the bigger cities.
They're vested in here. They live, they're seeing it.
It's their home too.
You, you, you mentioned the cutting the grass. Uh, we went, uh, I've got my two little ones. I've got a two-year-old, nine-month-old. You can hear them up there. We're going to have to get up there and.
They're adorable by the way. Adorable.
Thank you. Thank you. But we, we went to a park. Um, I, I'm the worst person with directions, but it was next to the skate park.
Yeah. Yeah. I believe it's Kalina Park, right?
Yep. Yeah. I think you're right. And we let the kids run on playground and the pavilion there was, was outstanding.
Yes.
And, and it looked like it was newer. I, I don't know, but it looked newer. There was electrical spot and there was a nice big sign there saying that if you wanted to use this, call city hall. Um, it's nice to have the facilities like that to use in a community and the people that maintain it because they live here, take a little bit more ownership in it.
Yes.
With it. So thank you guys for, for keeping those maintained very well.
And just to be clear, that doesn't mean you can't go sit there if there's nobody there. You don't have to reserve it to like, you know, be at the park. That's if you wanted to say, um, do a graduation party and use that pavilion for that. You know, that's, that's where we talk about reserving. Um, you know, but a lot of our facilities, I mean, we have zip lines in our parks. We have, uh, we've got the um, disc golf course, which, you know, I, I think one of the other things kind of to go back to our city work staff, that, that disc golf park was pretty much built entirely in-house. We didn't contract out on that. You know, our guys put in the, the concrete pads. Our guys put in the um, holes, I guess. I don't know. I, I don't play disc golf, but you know what I'm talking, the, the net piece where you, you throw into, I don't know what you call that thing.
If, if somebody's watching this and, and knows the technical name for that.
Post in the comments.
Yeah. Post in the comments. I will take Brian and you, you can send him a message too to, so when he talks about it again, he knows exactly what they're called.
So I can be more informed on, on the terminology of, of disc golf. I mean, I've played once myself and it was a lot of fun. Is that thunder? Wow. Getting a little storm tonight.
Huh. Could be.
Yeah. So anyway, but the, we built that in-house and the fact that we have these guys that can build these things in-house saves us so much money. I mean, you know, the, you know, another park improvement, um, over at JC Park, all the new bathrooms, a lot of that work was done in-house. Not all of it, but a lot of it we do, did in-house. And when we can do things in-house, we save a lot of money. We save a lot of money. And the fact that our guys are willing to do that is great.
It's huge.
Yeah.
Well, well, Brian, thank you for coming on tonight and doing this and, and, and even to the other uh, Joel and, 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 and James for doing it as well. And, and for you guys out there that are going to be watching it later this evening. Um, very nice perspective that we have. It was nice to have. I've had the city worker. I had the young buck. I had a semi-veteran into it. Um, and, and it's, it's, it's interesting to see the different perspective and viewpoints even from having you here. So we appreciate that for you. Anybody that's watching this, if, if there's anything you want to see, um, you know, we're, we're going to do more of these uh, with, with city council and, and city administrator again. I'll get Joel back on here and city works and, and local businesses. So if there's anything you guys want to see on here or questions you want to ask, you know, send me a direct message, put a comment somewhere on it and, and we can definitely address it. Um, before we finally say goodbye, any last questions or Brian comments?
Uh, I, I don't think I have any que- I would love to do a follow-up. You know, so when you, when we get through that first round, anytime, I would love to do this again. This has been great. I really appreciate you inviting me here to do this. Um, I love this opportunity. It's been a lot of fun. I've enjoyed this a lot. So anytime you want to do this again, I'm down. Um, but yeah, I mean, the biggest thing I, I, I want to kind of get out there to the, the community is, you know, I'm listening. I will respond. I'm always open to a, a conversation, a dialogue. I mean, anybody who's ever sent me an email will tell you, I respond. And you know, if it turns into a back and forth, I'll pick up the phone. You know, because if we start getting two, three back and forth in email, it's time for a bigger conversation. I'll, I'll come to your house. I'll invite you to my house. We can sit down. You know, have a cup of coffee, have a conversation, um, you know, because I'm not voting for me. I mean, to a degree, yeah, because I'm a taxpayer too, but um, I don't represent just me. I represent all of Lawnsale. We don't have precincts. So every single one of us on the council, the mayor, we represent every single citizen in Lawnsdale. And the more I hear from you, the better uh, decision I can make on your behalf. And that's just the biggest thing is please reach out, communicate, you know, if you're mad at me, tell me. If you want to yell at me, I'm okay. I'm okay with being yelled at. I'm also okay with being uh, you know, uh, just, just to chat, thank you. I mean, I, I'm not looking for thanks, but if you want to just say, I'm doing a good job, I, I'm happy to hear that too. But you know, I will always listen to everybody's perspective. Ask anybody who's, who's had a conversation with me. I, I am, I'm absolutely open and will, will talk to you and love to talk to the people. So please, reach out.
Don't hesitate to do it. I'll, what I can do too is I can also, when I, when I upload this, I will highlight and copy his city council email. So it's a lot easier to find it on, on, instead of going to the city's website. And definitely do visit the city's website.
And if you want to throw the direct link on there, you know, maybe go ahead and just grab it, throw the direct link on there to, to me directly. My phone number's there too.
We'll, we'll definitely do that. Um, and in the meantime, thank you everybody for watching and we'll catch you with another round very shortly.
Thanks, everybody.